Alrighty, welcome everybody. Welcome to the special episode of Brownsville Tech Live. And tonight, we kick off our city election campaign coverage. And tonight, I've got the distinct honor and pleasure of having our first interview for this season. It is Ms. Denise Chavez, who is running for City Commissioner, District Number Three. Denise, welcome to the show.
Thank you, and thank you for the invitation to be on the show, and good evening to everyone who's watching, and thank you for taking the time out to watch.
Yes, definitely, we're getting pretty excited. We've, I've got a full schedule for the next three months of interviews. So I am kind of glad that I'm kicking this off, but I probably will be relieved in three months when I'm done with the interviews. But we are glad to have you. Once again, everybody, the election is on May 3rd. And early voting starts, I believe, May 22nd. And so for those of you-
April 22nd, sorry.
Oh, sorry, sorry, yeah, that's right, April 22nd. I get my dates confused these days. So it's April 22nd. That's the start of early voting, and it goes all the way through, I believe, May 2nd, right?
Uh, May, it's Saturday, May 3rd is the actual, um, election day, but you can start voting as soon as April 22nd.
Right, right. Yeah, that's, that's what I, that's what I was reading, so. So I've got to update my scroll ticker down there, because I don't have the actual start dates of the, uh, of the early voting. But for those of you out there, early voting. And, you know, voting's important, everybody. I mean, there's no doubt that, you know, a lot of things happen with the people that we elect. And it's very important that we get out to vote. And as my BFF right behind me says, elections are, local elections are important. In some cases, it can mean the difference between getting water to fight a forest fire or not. So, uh, it's very important that we, um, you know, go out and vote and, uh, make our choices, so. Alright, well Denise, I know this is your first time and on the show, and I would like to see if you could introduce yourself. Basically, you know, describe who you are, uh, where you were born, uh, what you've done, you know, what your educational background is, as well as your professional. So, you've got, uh, you've got the stage.
Thank you, Daniel. So, um, to everyone at home, so I'm Denise Granado Chavez. As Daniel stated, I am running for City Commissioner for District Three. I wanted to let everyone know that I was born and raised in Brownsville. Um, I grew up in the southmost area with some very conservative grandparents that raised me.
Great, I'm from southmost too, by the way, sorry to interrupt.
Oh, really?
Yes.
So, my mom was a single mom, and so I grew up in my grandparents' home, and, uh, I'm very grateful for the way that I grew up. I got to go to some great BISD schools, including Del Castillo and Falk Middle School, for which I was just, um, had the honor of being Principal of the Day recently for Falk Middle School. And I was actually part of, I didn't go to Porter, I was zoned to Porter at the time, but I didn't go because I had the opportunity to be part of the medical program that had just gotten started, uh, at that point. And so I was one of the, I was a part of one of the first graduating classes of the medical program. I wanted to go to medical school, but, um, and so I, I got into Baylor, I went to Baylor because I was going to do pre-med. But I ended up, uh, majoring in economics, and I have a degree from the Hank Cameron School of Business from Baylor University. I did graduate at the top of my class. Of course, it wasn't easy. I had to work two jobs. Um, I got scholarships, I got financial aid. Still had to work two jobs, but I got through it, and, um, I learned quite a bit about, about life and about lots of things. And, uh, my intention was to go to law school after that. But, uh, my mom was diagnosed with lupus, and I decided, I made the decision to come home and, and be with her. And, um, there was a great opportunity at the time for me to embark on a, on a career, helping cities, school districts, counties, institutions of higher education down here. And they had trouble finding someone that was willing to live in the valley to service the valley. And I, they knew that I was from the valley, the, the corporation that I worked with at the time. And so I took the opportunity, came back to help my mom, came back to raise a family. And, uh, I, I don't regret it. Um, there really is no place like Brownsville. I've lived in other areas, and we are truly, a truly unique area. And I'm glad that I came back, and I have had a seventeen-year career, where I've led a team of engineers, contractors, uh, worked with lots of different people to help, uh, public entities to get grants, to get loans, to get funding, and to do some pretty big infrastructure projects, um, all over the valley. And so, um, that's the kind of work experience that I have and my educational background. Um, the other thing that I, that is, I think is very important to mention is that ever since I was at Baylor University, I started volunteering with Habitat for Humanity. And that's when I realized that I really had a vocation for community service. And so when I moved down here, one of the first things that I did was I started, um, volunteering for various organizations, including Rotary. Uh, I was president of Rotary Club for several years, and I, um, I've served my community for a very long time in various capacities, uh, different boards and things like that, for about fifteen years, ever since I moved back in 2008. So, that's a little bit about me.
Well, you've done quite a bit, there's no doubt about that. Um, you know, yeah, definitely, you know, for those of us that have left the valley at some point, and that we come back, you're absolutely right. There's no other place like Brownsville, there's no doubt about that. You know, I've lived in the big city, I've lived in the medium-sized cities, I've lived in small cities. But Brownsville is still home, and, uh, just like you, I chose to come back for family reasons many, many years ago. And, um, as luck would have it, I stayed here, uh, you know, so I definitely can relate to, you know, going away and coming back and, you know, being more appreciative the second time around, right? You know, you know, when you're young, I mean, ya te quieres largar de aquí, you know, you just want to leave, right? But, uh, the reality of it is, is that even though I was gone, there was still a piece of me still left behind. And I'm kind of glad that, you know, um, some of us were lucky enough to, you know, to experience that, so. So tell us, what, uh, made you run? Uh, you know, this is a, a, a big district, uh, in a, in a, and actually, if I'm going to go ahead, if you don't mind, I'm going to flip to another screen here. And let me see, give me a second while I flip the screen. Uh, I'm gonna try to get our virtual iPad up and running, if you just give me a second.
Yeah, no problem.
Give me a second here. Oh, gosh. Really? I've got so many passwords, I can't remember which ones went. Give me a second while we turn on AirPlay. Oh, come on. Let's see. There we go. Eight and... There we go, alright. Okay. I haven't used this iPad in a couple of weeks, so. Okay, great, so let's go over. And like I mentioned, um, let me fix that, give me a second. Need to move that to the side. Okay, I see what's going on. Sorry about that. There we go. Alright, so basically, it's a big district, right? I mean, one of the things that you'll notice is that it really encompasses a lot of square mileage. I mean, all the way, you know, and ride along the freeway, all the way down to some sections of downtown, and then it goes even all the way to like Port Is- almost like Port Isabel, which I didn't even realize, you know? And, and by the way, um, you know, Roy de la Santos is currently the Commissioner. He's moving on, you know, to another, to an at-large district. So, um, this is the district that he currently serves. And, uh, but it's definitely, if you can see by the map, it is huge, and it actually covers my, my area too, where I live, so. Uh, you know, it is. So what actually made you decide to run for District Three?
Well, I live in District Three, but what I really wanted to do when I moved back in 2008 was to give back to my community. And I had realized back when I was in college, and I was hoping to build houses for Habitat for Humanity. We were building a home for, for a veteran at the time, I was disabled. And I was, I was actually chosen to be the PR person for Habitat for Humanity. And I realized that with my speaking ki- speaking skills and my writing skills, that I could really have an impact on things, and, and make people come and, and volunteer and join us, and do all these things that, that really had an impact on the, on the community. Of course, it was the community of Waco at the time, right? But, uh, so when I moved back here, I really wanted to give back to my own community. And I saw that the city had made great strides, even in 2008, uh, from the time that I left, and then the time that I, that I came back. Um, the city had made a lot of improvements, but I still felt that there was more that needed to be done. Because we're such, we're in such a unique position where we have, uh, we have our own, basically, our own, uh, space, you know, now we have SpaceX, we didn't have SpaceX in 2008, but we have our international bridges. We have just so much to offer, such a historical city, um, things that other cities don't have to offer. And I felt that there was more that needed to be done. And, and I felt like it was almost a responsibility for me to give back. Um, because of the way that I grew up and my, my unique life experiences, and my education and my work experience, I feel like I'm very well poised to make a difference in this community, and just offer a broader perspective than some of the other commissioners that have come before. And not that they, that, you know, that I'm saying that anyone has done a bad job. Some commissioners have done great things for this city. But I feel just because I have, I had such a unique, unique upbringing, and I feel like I had all these challenges and things happen in my life for a reason. I think there's always, there's always a reason. I believe that, that, that God does things for a reason. I think that, um, he doesn't put you in a situation that you can't handle. And, and because I was able to overcome all of these things, um, you know, I had to take the bus, uh, at some point, because my mom lost her vehicle after my grandparents passed away. Um, I had to take the city bus. My uncle, I grew up with an uncle that had special needs, and I, I had to face all these challenges in, in helping to take care of him growing up. And it was just very difficult, just having a special needs family member and in this city, and just getting around, and, and it was just, I, because I faced all of these things, I felt that it was my responsibility and duty to make life easier for other people. And, uh, to, to really uplift those that are trying to, um, have a better life here in our community. And, and that's why I decided to run, in a nutshell.
Yeah, I mean, I remember when I was, I think, a junior in high school, um, I got an opportunity to actually work with, at the time, it was called BUS, right? It's Brownsville Metro today, but I actually worked in the Special Services Department, which actually dealt with providing transportation services for those that were elderly and those that had special needs. And it kind of gave me a, a different kind of insight into how important that service was. I mean, there is, the service provided, you know, uh, assistance to the elderly and those of special needs when they had doctor's appointments, when they simply wanted to go out to the mall, right, to do some shopping and so forth. So it was, it was really eye-opening, you know, to see that, and, you know, one of the challenges that we've had over the last several years is the lack of bus stops, right? Proper bus stops out in the city. I think the city has made some great strides in the last year or two to try to upgrade some of those, some of those, uh, bus stops, but definitely, um, you know, we, we need more. I, I still see bus stops without actual, you know, bus stop facilities.
Coverage.
Coverage, right? I mean, there's, there's still not a lot of that. And then, of course, you know, the other thing is, you know, the routes. I really don't know what the routes are anymore. Uh, but, you know, um, I mean, it's, it's just, i- i- it's just a phenomenal service overall. I mean, I got the opportunity to work at BUS at the time, and I got an opportunity to actually ride the bus. I had never ridden a, a bus before, to be honest with you. I was a spoiled kid, what can I say, right? But while, while working for BUS at the time, I got an opportunity to actually get on a bus. And back in those days, the, the terminal was not that nice terminal you see right now on Adams. It was down on Market Square, you know?
I was there.
Yeah, so it was a little different. It was definitely a little different, no doubt about that, but, uh, so tell me, what do you think some of the most pressing issues are facing the city today with regards to just overall?
Well, as I mentioned, I think that we have made great strides. I see a lot of great improvements, um, fostering entrepreneurship by having the, the First Friday and having, uh, Lunada and things like that. I think all of those things are great. And we've built some great parks and trails. I use them, I run in the morning at, at the park and things like that. However, I think that we really need to get to where we can tackle some of the more complex issues. Um, some of the ones that even involved us working with the state, with, with the state level, working with, um, just kind of getting, I think, out of our comfort zone. And that would be the roads and the drainage. Um, I understand how difficult it is. I understand that it's costly, I get all that. I understand that we've got to work with the drainage district. I understand that we've got to work with some, with state, with the state level at some point. But just because it's complex, it doesn't mean that we continue to ignore it and let it get worse. Especially as our population grows, I think that, that it's imperative that we address that. Um, I studied economics. The thing that you need is land, labor, capital, the right infrastructure, and you need intellectual capital, right?
Right.
Uh, but if we don't have the right actual city infrastructure, the right roads and things and, and whatnot, if people need transportation, they need to be able to get to work, they need to be able to get to school, they need to be able to get to where they can look for a job. And we're not going to spur economic development until we have a good handle on our infrastructure and on our transportation. And one of the big things that I, that I also want to, uh, have happen is just sustainable economic development, where we really foster our entre- our entrepreneurs, we really help them, that if anyone that has a great idea and has the right work ethic and wants to succeed in this city, let's make it easier, let's bring back our people, coming back to intellectual capital. Let's bring back the people that have left, people like you and I. Um, we need to stop this brain drain. We bring them back and we, and we keep them here. But they need to have something here to keep them here. And so that all kind of goes hand in hand. And it also goes hand in hand with, um, if we're going to have population growth and we're going to bring big industry, then we need to be ready to provide the right type of emergency services to our citizens, or continue to provide those services in an effective manner. And that's something that I'm very, very concerned about. Uh, there are new subdivisions coming up. I've had several conversations with some of our first responders. Um, they do an excellent job. I've gotten to know some of them, uh, some of them, uh, throughout this process. And I know that there are some challenges out there, and those are some of the things that I really want to focus on. I want to make sure that as we grow as a population, we do it in a way that is sustainable, and in a way where we can still provide the right type of emergency services to our citizens. I know that very well, because my mom had lupus, she's had a heart attack. My uncle was immobile at some point. The city ambulance had to come and pick him up a couple of times because he needed to be transported. Those are essential services, especially for some of our most needy citizens. And we need to protect that, and we need to protect that, and we need to support our first responders with better benefits, with more support, so that they can do their jobs effectively.
Right. Well, definitely, you know, one of the areas that I think has been a problem, um, has been the fact that, you know, people say that it's difficult to do business in Brownsville, you know, that it's difficult to start a business in Brownsville. And I can tell you firsthand, I remember a few years back, I had a business, and I actually moved my business to another area of town, because I thought I was going to get more business, because it was a higher traffic count. And it, it probably would have been, the problem that happened is I ran into all sorts of problems at the city permit office, all kinds of rules and regulations, and the fire marshal, and this and that. And my business, I'll, I'll, I'll be upfront, it was a tax prep business. And as you know, that business is only, uh, the, the, the high season is between January and April. And after that, that's it, right? There's, there's nothing else, right? I mean, yeah, you can, you know, deal with all the people that file their taxes late and extensions and stuff like that and so forth, yeah, you know, you can do that. But the big bulk of the business is the first four months of the year. Well, I had all kinds of issues. Uh, first of all, the landlord, uh, when they built the building, um, they had no plans to have anybody there with a restaurant, okay? So the actual ceiling was like open air, not open air, but open from, from one end to the other end. Well, one thing that happened, they decided to rent to somebody that was going to put a restaurant, and that changed the dynamics of the building, okay? You needed firewall, so in case there was a fire, it would stop the fire from spreading to the other tenants, right? Well, that wasn't built, okay? So what happened, they, the, all of those issues with the restaurant actually prevented us from getting our certificate of occupancy. And as a result of that, a lot of us were like, were like, we couldn't open, we couldn't have even one person because of this. So, you know, all of that should have been kind of talked about and dealt upfront, but a lot of us business owners, we couldn't open. And in my case, I ended up losing money, you know? So, and then to make, you know, to add insult to injury, you know, uh, the other issue was that we couldn't put alarm systems in the building, because the AT&T and Spectrum, the main trunk ended about a block away, okay? So we couldn't have internet services. And as a result of that, we couldn't have alarm services. And to top it off, they broke in to my, my, uh, establishment and stole a ton of stuff, because they knew that the place wasn't secure. But it was just, it was just hellacious, because I'd go back and forth to the permit office, back and forth, the fire marshal, this and that. And it was, it, and so this, that's my story, right? But I think you've heard it before. It's difficult, and, and it should be eas- it should be a lot easier, or at least the resources should be there to explain to business owners what the steps are, because despite the fact they've done some strides, they put a website out there and certain things, it's still difficult. It still is, you know? So, you know, so I think that's one area I think that, I think we need to do a better job. You know, the permitting office, you know? Um, with regards to economic growth, um, well, you, you talked about the, you talked about the infrastructure, the streets and the drainage, and there's no doubt. I mean, there's no doubt, I mean, you and I have lived here long enough to know that they've worked on Boca Chica forever, and it seems, it still floods, no matter how, what they do to it, you know? Of course, you know, uh, you know, in the past, you know, people have made me aware that Boca Chica is a state highway, right? And we have to coordinate with the state, but by golly, you know, it's been years. It's been years, and we still can't get that street right, so. You know, I don't know what it's going to take, but definitely, we need to knock on some doors at the state, no doubt about that. By the way, for the audience, the comments line is open, if y'all want to chime in, so. Let's see here. Um, so we talked about the permitting process, we talked about, you know, access to business resources. And, and what do you think we can do better with regards to access to business resources? I'm, I mean, I know that E-Bridge was set up a few years ago, but it almost seems that by the time that the rest of the, of the community finds out about a possible grant, or, or, you know, or something going on, it seems like the event has come and gone, and the money has come and gone. I mean, what can we do? Because obviously, you know, they've got nice building down there, they hold some, some, some cool events, but it almost seems that, you know, when the rest of us find out about it, it's already too late. I mean, what can we do to improve that? Because obviously, it's, it's not working for everybody, you know?
No, it's not. And I'm really glad that you brought that up. I was hoping that you would bring up something like that. Um, I just had a conversation, um, because, you know, being that I'm running for office, um, I, uh, I visit my, I've been visiting my hair salon and my nail salon, right? Because I'm, I'm doing appearances and things like that. So, um, so I went to, uh, visit my hair salon, and the, the owner of the hair salon is a good friend of mine. She decided to go on her own and open up a, a, a hair salon. She was an employee prior to that, uh, at another hair salon. And, and I asked her, and I said, you know, you're a small business owner, please tell me what the city could have done differently for you? How could things have been made easier for you? Because I know you're a hardworking person, I've known you for a long time, and I've seen you grow in, in your career, um, doing hair. And, uh, how can we make things easier? I asked her, and she said, um, well, I had to really stay on top of things, she said, when I was, uh, going through the process of opening up my own business. Because the process was just so slow, and I felt like the people that I was talking to just were not in a hurry to help me out. And so I had to just be on top of it and keep reminding them that, and letting them know, okay, I already installed this, I already have this, can you please come by and inspect it, can you, etc.? She said, and one of the biggest challenges was just finding a space. Um, it was very difficult to find out what space was available to rent, and then what, or to lease, and what space, uh, fit my needs as a salon. Because kind of like what you said, you were, you were planning on having a tax preparation, you wanted a, a tax preparation business in a building, but the building had been used as a restaurant. So she said, that was one of the challenges, is that some of the buildings just didn't, didn't want a hair salon, or they were not apt for a hair salon. And so she said, I just had trouble just with that. And then she said, and it would have been great, I didn't get any grants, I didn't get any loans, and it would have been amazing to be able to qualify for some of that. It would have made the process easier. Um, but I couldn't find any, she said. And this was just maybe a couple of years ago that she opened, it wasn't that long ago. She said, I couldn't find any, and I said, I know that there are resources out there, again, E-Bridge and, um, B C I C, you know, make some efforts and things like that. There are efforts being made out there, I find out about the workshops. But then again, I'm the type of person that's very in tune with what's going on with the community. I'm very civically engaged. I work with a lot of nonprofits, right, for, I've been doing that for years, and so I usually know what's, what's going on. Um, and even for me, sometimes I miss these things. I want to attend, and it's already, oh, it's already over, or you have to have signed up by this time, or whatever. And one of my biggest pet peeves, and, and, and maybe this will get me in trouble saying this, but- Because obviously, you know, they've got nice building down there, they hold some, some, some cool events. But it almost seems that, you know, when the rest of us find out about it, it's already too late. I mean, what can we do to improve that? Because obviously, it's, it's not working for everybody, you know?
No, it's not. And I'm really glad that you brought that up. I was hoping that you would bring up something like that. Um, I just had a conversation. Because, you know, being that I'm running for office, um. I, uh, I visit my, I've been visiting my hair salon and my nail salon, right? Because I'm, I'm doing appearances and things like that, so. Um, so I went to uh, visit my hair salon and the, the owner of the hair salon is a good friend of mine. She decided to go on her own and open up a, a, a hair salon. She was an employee prior to that, uh, at another hair salon. And, and I asked her and I said, you know, you're a small business owner, please tell me what the city could have done differently for you. How could things have been made easier for you? Cuz I know you're a hardworking person. I've known you for a long time and I've seen you grow in, in your career. Um, doing hair and uh, how can we make things easier? I asked her and she said, um, well, I had to really stay on top of things, she said. When I was uh, going through the process of opening up my own business. Because the process was just so slow and I felt like the people that I was talking to just were not in a hurry to help me out. And so I had to just be on top of it and keep reminding them that, and letting them know, okay, I already installed this, I already have this. Can you please come by and inspect it? Can you, et cetera? She said, and one of the biggest challenges was just finding a space. Um, it was very difficult to find out. What space was available to rent and then what or to lease? And what space uh, fit my needs as a salon? Cuz kind of like what you said, you were, you were planning on having a tax preparation. You wanted a, a tax preparation business in a building, but the building had been used as a restaurant. So she said that was one of the challenges is that some of the buildings just didn't, didn't want a hair salon, or they were not apt for a hair salon. And so she said, I just had trouble just with that. And then she said, and it would have been great, I didn't get any grants, I didn't get any loans. And it would have been amazing to be able to qualify for some of that. It would have made the process easier. Um, but I couldn't find any, she said. And this was just maybe a couple of years ago that she opened. It wasn't that long ago. She said, I couldn't find any. And I said, I know that there are resources out there, again, E-Bridge and. Um, B C I C, you know, makes some efforts and things like that. There are efforts being made out there. I find out about the workshops. But then again, I'm the type of person that's very in tune with what's going on with the community. I'm very civically engaged. I work with a lot of nonprofits, right? For, I've been doing that for years. And so I usually know what's, what's going on. Um, and even for me, sometimes I miss these things. I wanna attend and it's already, oh, it's already over, or you have to have signed up by this time or whatever. And one of my biggest pet peeves and, and, and maybe this will get me in trouble saying this, but. I, I don't understand why we're not doing more to help people that just have a good idea. People that just want to open up a business, that are willing to write a business plan. Why don't we sit down with them and help them more? I don't, I don't get it. And, and I feel like, I feel like the help is mainly going. To the businesses that are already established, or the people that are already established in the city. And, and I have nothing against that. I mean, I, I, I want them to grow and I want them to succeed. But what about everyone else that wants to, to do that as well, right? That has the work ethic and has the willingness and, 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 and is. I just, I don't see that it's easy. And, and I, and I, and then that bothers me and I want it to be easier. I want people like my hairstylist to be able to get a grant.
Right.
Uh, if, if they, if they deserve it, right? If they've earned it.
Right. I mean, you know, one of the things that happened a few years ago. Was that I know that there was a ten million dollar donation from the Elon Musk Foundation, right? I have no idea where that ten million went to. I know that we spent some money on some murals and that's fine. I mean, that's not. That's not a, that's not a big deal for me. I mean, I liked all of them. Some people didn't like a few of them, but I liked all of them, okay?
It's nice, but.
But, you know, but if in reality, if, if I would have had my choice of where to spend the money, that would have not been the very first thing, right? And then from there, we went on to install a few light posts down in downtown. And I don't believe all of them were installed, some of them were installed. But in my opinion, with the kind of stuff that they said happened. It still doesn't equate ten million dollars. So, you know, where, where did the rest of the money go? Now, I did hear that the Musk Foundation did pull the money back. I guess they didn't like the way the money was distributed. And so I don't know whether it's fact or fiction, right? But one of the rumors out there was that they had pulled eight out of the ten million back. Uh, because of whatever reason. And so I don't know if only two million was, was distributed. I have no idea. Same thing with B I S D, right? The Musk Foundation, I think, uh, donated, I don't know, I think it was like ten million, twenty million, I can't remember. To this day, we don't know where it went, right? So, you know, that's one of the things, you know, is that, you know, we, we want to be able to spend our money wisely. And a lot of times, I hate to say it, we've blown it. I mean, we've blown it on things that. While they're nice, right? While they're nice, is it a priority? I mean, one of the things back many, many years ago, and I'll be honest with you, I was against the idea. Of splitting the sales tax, you know, they, originally the sales tax was together. And then they split it into part A and part B. And the reason they did that many years ago, and this was back in the Henry Gonzalez administration, a long time ago. Was because there was a concern that the money was more being focused on economic development versus quality of life. Projects, right? And this is where all the bike trails came up and the parks and stuff like that. And there's nothing wrong with that. I love bike trails, just like you, I use them when I can, right? But the reality of it is, is that, you know, economic growth is the most vital, important thing. Here that we need to focus on. I mean, we need to transition from our citizens making seven dollars and twenty-five cents an hour to something greater, right? And, and so we need, we need to refocus on attracting industry and business back. Now, granted that, you know, the critics will say, well, you know, there's been all kinds of things that have happened where we've granted. Monies and tax breaks to these companies and they've come and gone. Yes, I understand that. But that shouldn't stop us from pursuing new opportunities, right? Just because we lost Titan, just because we lost Paragon, right? The ones that were supposed to build those air drone air taxis, right? Just because we lost, you know, a few others, doesn't mean we, we should be afraid not to pursue more business. Because at the end of the day, at the end of the day, when our citizens are making money. That means that they can go out and shop locally and spend money and buy homes. And when you, when they buy homes, they, they, they are part of the tax base. And that's more money to the city. And we've gotta think that way. And unfortunately, you know, you know. One of the things that I feel sometimes we suffer is from a perceived negativity, right? We get all these northern journalists that come down and they throw out an article every once in a while. The poorest city in the country, right? Which is not true, which is not true, by the way. Because anybody who is, who has ever traveled outside. North of Cor- Corpus Christi will tell you, there are places in the United States.
Oh, yeah.
That are poor. I've been to them. Believe me, we are not poor. By any means. So I get very offended when I hear people throw those articles out on social media. Cuz we've got a few people that just throw them out there, just, just to throw them out there. But believe me, we are not the poorest city in the country, that's for sure. I've, I've seen poor and that ain't one of them. And we're not one of them.
Not at all. We have a lot more to offer than, than what some people may, may perceive and.
Yeah.
It's almost, we have to market Brownsville to Brownsville too, you know?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, one of the things that we've got to get it into our mindset is that. How much more proof do you want? Our workforce is exceptional. Our local workforce today is exceptional. We can build anything from widgets. To interplanetary rockets that will one day take us to the moon and beyond. That is Brownsville's workforce that's doing that. And we need to realize that our workforce has potential. It, they have proven up to now, seven launches in total, that we can build. Those guys out there are our welders. They are riveting these rockets together that one day are gonna take us to the moon. Of course, there's engineers that have come from up north, but that's not the majority of the people that are working down there. It is our workforce and we can build anything. And we've gotta let, we've gotta market our city and say, look. Look at what we've done, look at what we can do. We can build cars, we can build widgets, we can build interplanetary rockets, we can build anything. You know? But our, but you know what? We don't do a good job at marketing our city. And I think that's part of the problem.
We don't, we don't market Brownsville to Brownsville. That's part of the problem. I keep hearing and I hate listening to people say this. There's nothing to do in Brownsville. There is a lot to do in Brownsville.
Right.
And if you go to other places, you know, I used to drive back from Waco back and forth all the time when I was, when I was at, in college. And a lot of the small towns in between don't, don't have a whole lot. I mean, they have like a Whataburger and a Chili's and that's about it, you know, and uh.
And a Dairy Queen.
Yeah, and a Dairy Queen, yeah. Offer. I mean, the historical aspect or zoo is, is a unique thing. Um, that maybe some of us just don't, don't really appreciate, um. Until we move out of here, right? And we, we miss all these things, the palm trees, the tacos, the great seafood, um. The, the proximity to the beach. Not everyone lives by the beach. Um, and now we, we've got SpaceX, we have all these great things happening in Brownsville. So we need to stop saying that there's nothing to do in Brownsville. We have all these great cultural festivities. Look at what's going on this week with Trail Days. Um, that is something truly unique in the entire nation. And we're actually one of the safest cities in the nation. We have just so much to offer, the, the history, just, um, the, the richness of the culture. There is so much to do every single weekend. It's a great place to raise a family. I'm glad that my daughter gets to grow up here because this is one of the best places to raise a family.
Oh, absolutely. Well, one of the things I wanted to talk a little about, and you have touched on it, you know, I, just like. You, I hear constantly, well, there's nothing to do in Brownsville. You know, I've heard that for quite a long time, right? But one of the things is that I say all the time is that. The reason why is because we're short sighted a lot of times, right? And I'll give you an example, I'll give you an example right off. I actually, I'll give you two examples right off the bat. You know, Judge Koskless and I, bless his heart, you know, he was a good friend of mine. I loved him. I loved him. He was, he's been on, he was on my shows many times. And he was a mentor to me and I truly miss him. But there were times that him and I did not agree on certain things, right? And one was, of course, SpaceX and the, was, uh, was the arena. And I'll be honest with you, I was for the arena, okay? And one of the biggest arguments at the time was. That of course, if we decided to vote for the arena, that it was gonna raise our property taxes, right? The main argument, that was the main argument. The reality of it is that our property taxes went up arena or no arena. But what bothers me the most when people say, oh, we don't have anything. We have to go all the way to Edinburgh or McAllen to go see a show. Well, hello, hello, you had an opportunity to vote on something and you didn't do it. But not only did you vote against the arena, you voted with everything that comes along with it. When people go to Edinburgh and McAllen and that town, Hidalgo, or that other uh, arena is at. They just don't go to, go to the shows. That's not the only thing they spend their money on. By the way, a friend of mine just spent like four hundred bucks to go see, I don't know who it was, right? But that's not the only thing they do. They go and they go eat. And then they go to the mall and they go shop. Okay, so there's a lot of trickle down stuff that people didn't really think about when this thing came up. Right? Is that there's a lot that goes along with it. You know, that we are actually, our citizens here in Cameron County, and I'm not just saying Brownsville. Because I blame the entire county for that vote. We are draining our money to another county. We are actually helping another county when we should have been helping ourselves, right? And the mere fact we don't have a multi-venue, and I'm not gonna say the word arena cuz it drives some people nuts, right? But I'm gonna say the word multi-venue, okay? And there's lots of reasons why we need a multi-venue. Now, whether that's a city project or a county project or whatever. We need a multi-venue and we need it for a couple of reasons. One, most people don't know that up until this past semester. We held U T R G V graduations for Brownsville students here in Brownsville. And U T R G V in Edinburgh decided that it was too costly. And it was just uncomfortable for people, for them to have graduation ceremonies for U T R G V graduates. So now, our graduates and their families have to travel an hour, okay? To go attend their college kids' graduation because we have no venue large enough to hold that. The Harlingen Convention Center was not large enough, right? Um, the stadium, are you kidding me? For any of us who have actually attended a high school graduation in June. You'll die in the heat. I mean, it's the sweltering heat. It's horrible. I mean, the other time that we ran into an issue. Was remember when veterans made it to the playoffs and they had those games? People couldn't park, they couldn't, they, they couldn't get in there. We need a multi-venue. Now, am I saying that the city should foot the bill completely? Oh, no, absolutely not, right? I mean, maybe, maybe it should be a concerted effort between the city, the county. And maybe we can reach out to, to private entities as well, as well, right? I just don't think we went about it the wrong way, the first vote and the second vote. But we need something because one thing's for sure, the event center. Is nice, but it actually is less capacity than the old Jacob Brown Civic Center was. If you go measure by measure, that was a smaller, that was a smaller venue. Why they went with a smaller venue? I have no idea, okay? Why the sports park ended up being what it is? It's not ca- it's not capable to hold a whole lot of people. Why? I have no idea, but we've made some mistakes, right? We've, we've made some mistakes. And, and I just hope, and I know I've heard the rumors that the multi-venue. Uh, may come back for a vote again. I mean, what's your position? I mean, do we need a multi-venue?
Um, I recently was part of the Facilities Committee with B I S D. And I was advocating for there to be a fine art center. Because I agree with you, we don't, we send a lot of our people and a lot of people go willingly to McAllen too. Which once in a while I do go to McAllen. We all do, right? But I don't, but I don't agree with the fact that we always have to go to McAllen for everything. Or that we have to go outside of here for, for certain things, including for our kids to go perform. Uh, we should have the right venues here in our hometown to do that because it's gonna spur economic development, as you mentioned. They don't just come for the event. They come and they, they eat at restaurants, um, some people do stay over, so they occupy.
They stay at hotels.
I've stayed at a hotel in McKellen before. Uh, when my, my husband had a meeting over there and it was kind of late, so we decided to stay at a hotel over there, right? So, um, so we need these types of venues here in, in, in Brownsville. And I know, uh, the decision to pass the bond was voted down. Um, and I think a lot of that is, um, just educating people, the same with the arena. On what does raise property taxes and what does not raise property taxes. And where the money and the funding is coming from. It's all about education. The more we inform our citizens and our voters, the better off we are, the better off we're all gonna make better informed decisions. So with the arena, that's a hot tax, that's a hotel occupancy tax. That is going to fund, uh, that's the planned way to fund the arena. That is a tax that gets added to your hotel bill. Most of that will invariably be footed, footed. By people that are coming from out of town and staying in Brownsville.
Exactly.
However, yes, some of us do stay in, at the island, right? Some of us go for a weekend at the island, so we may end up paying a little bit. But, um, but just so that we all know, that's where that is coming from. Now, as far as the B I S D property tax, that's B I S D. And B I S D is not the only taxing entity. The city is also a taxing entity. There's a lot that goes into this. The taxes are a function, the property taxes have different variables that go into them. One of them that we haven't had much control over in recent years is the rise in property values. So as property values go up, your taxes are gonna go up regardless of what the rate is, unless the rate is just. Really, really low, right? But it's a function, when you have to multiply, it's multiply the rate times the property value. And you have to consider everything that goes into the property tax, which is the city, the school district, et cetera. You have to consider the fact that some people claim exemptions, um, especially some of our older people, right, have some certain exemptions, others don't. The state of Texas just raised the exemption, it may raise it again. Um, there are different variables. And I think the key here to getting these better venues built. Obviously, it takes money and we don't wanna burden our taxpayers unnecessarily. But we need, that's why we need to find ways where there's a long-term positive impact. Where there's a return on investment, where there is revenue generated. We need to look at all of those things. And we need to look at, you know, and I know I'm talking like an economics person because I am. You need to look at several variables in order to make an informed decision. And you need to know where the money is really coming from. And without all the rumors and the gossip and the misinformation. Just, we need, but we need to make it easier, kind of like, like small businesses that wanna start out. We need to make it easier for people to find this information and to verify it and to understand for themselves, how is this going to impact me? Is this gonna impact me by six dollars? Is this gonna impact me by sixty dollars? And am I gonna get the return? So my kid is gonna get a better venue. I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna be able to see my, my, my child graduate here at, in my hometown. Or I'm not gonna have to travel so much to McAllen anymore. Uh, I can avoid the traffic. I mean, there are so many different things. But I do get tired of people comparing us to McAllen and, and comparing us to Hidalgo County. To begin with is, is a very unfair comparison. Their population is a lot greater than ours. That's the first thing to consider. They do get more funding than us usually because of the, the bigger population. And they also have a bigger, uh, sales tax base because of the population. And, 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 and just, and they have a lot of retail. They have a lot of restaurants and a lot of retail. But retail jobs historically are not always the best paying jobs, right?
Correct.
And so we want a good combination here in Brownsville where our citizens have somewhere to go shop. But at the same time, we need to provide our citizens with opportunities to get better pay and better benefits. Because the better pay and better benefits that they have, the more they're gonna go and reinvest in their own city. And they're gonna, they, they have money to spend. And we have a better tax base and we have better resources. And that, it, it all goes hand in hand. There's a macro aspect and there's a micro aspect and we have to consider both. In making sure that we have sustainable economic development. So I'm not against the, the arena, to answer your question. I'm not against it, I just, um. But I do think that there's some more information that we need to disseminate to people. I think that we need to consider how much it's gonna cost to maintain and operate it because it is a, a, it's gonna be a very large facility, right? My understanding is that they are going to outsource some of that. Um, it's gonna be basically like a, like a public-private partnership. But, um, we need to make sure that we can fill it up. We need to start getting things, um, planning things. Uh, for example, uh, I go to a lot of conferences. Uh, there is one for, for city commissioners and mayors, Texas Municipal League. Those, those conferences are what we need to attract here, what we need to have here. The big ones, not just the regional ones, but the really big ones. And fill up our arena, fill up our hotels. And have people shopping here and going to restaurants. And one other thing that I wanna mention is, McAllen is not better than us. We have a lot more to offer. We have. We have historical places to visit. We have a zoo. We have a lot of stuff that we can do for free and that doesn't involve just shopping at the mall. Um, it, we, we have much more substance and and much more culture and historical significance to offer. And you can still shop at some great local shops. We have some of the best coffee shops. In, if we can make our, our, our city more livable, improve the quality of life, especially for, for example, for special needs families. As we expand the zoo, we need to keep that in mind. It needs to be apt for special needs families to visit our zoo. So that they won't have a hard time. I had a hard time just with a toddler when, when, when she was two, three years old and. You know, she, she was a, she was very active and it was hard to go to the zoo, right? So I can imagine how hard it is when you have a special needs child to visit some of these places. So we need to make these, these places more accessible and we have a great opportunity because we're expanding it right now. So let's expand it correctly. I understand that it was built in, uh, what is it, the fifties, I think, when around the time my mom was born. So now we're in twenty twenty-five. Let's make our zoo apt for twenty twenty-five.
Well, one of the things that I wanted to touch on a little bit, and I know that it is not part of your district, right? But you are, you would be a commissioner voting, um, you know, just like. You, you would have a say in whatever happens, but the airport obviously um is not, is part of the city. Everybody, it, it's everybody's airport, not just District Two's, right? It's everybody's airport, right? But one of the things that I feel, and and by the way, we've done some great strides with the airport. I mean, just the terminal expansion and so forth was, was, was the best investment I think they could have done in a long time. I think we need to pursue, you know, expanding the runway to twelve thousand feet, you know, to handle additional cargo and bigger planes and stuff like that. But definitely there's been some great strides, no doubt about that. But one of the things that concerns me and has concerned me. Is how we can get people to fly Brownsville because I think. That has been a factor for a very long time, even before the expansion, right? You know, there's all kinds of talk, well, it's because the ticket prices are a little higher than if you go to Harlingen or McAllen, but there's. But we've also gotta understand that we, we're a different flying market from Harlingen and we're a different. And of course, McAllen's a whole nother story. They're just as expensive as Brownsville. They're just a hundred miles away, right? But you know, we've had. Low, ultra-low cost carriers before, you know, we had Allegiant that came in and we recently had Avelo and. Let's not kid ourselves. I do not believe for a minute that the reason why those airlines pulled out was because of low demand. I believe that it's part of their business model. In fact, I was reading today. That Avelo was pulling out of three markets. They do it all the time. They do it every six months. They are, they're always evaluating. They're not long-term carriers, right? But obviously, what was disappointing to me at least is that. How was it possible that we lost carriers to destinations such as Orlando, right? Such as California and I think even Las Vegas. And why did our people not use those services? But they turn right around and they're willing to drive a hundred miles to go hop on Allegiant in McAllen. I just don't understand it. Is it? What have we done wrong? Or is it, is it our community that just doesn't? Know? I mean, there's people that claim don't even know we have an airport. I mean, I don't know. I, I just. I just get disappointed when I see those kinda things happen. I mean, what's your take on, on that?
You know, our airport is, is, is very modern. Actually got to take a tour of it before, um, before it was built, I mean, before it was completed. Um, and it looked great and everything. I know one of our, one of our issues getting started was, um. For whatever reason and going back to the small business uh situation again, uh, we didn't have a coffee shop. Uh, we didn't have a bar, we didn't have a place to eat. Uh, those are things that I think should have been maybe streamlined a little bit better.
And it took forever, by the way, to get those things in.
Long time, way too long. Uh, that is something that should have been considered, I think, uh, before the, the renovation. Um, happened. Um, so that's one thing is that I know, I, I travel a lot. Um, and I, and I used to travel a lot more, um, when I was younger, uh, when I started my career. And there were certain airports that I really liked. And then there were airports that I really didn't like stopping at, but I had to stop at, like Hobby. Hobby's not one of my favorites. Um, I'd never cared to fly out of McAllen. I usually fly out of Harlingen. And, and uh, and then I, I like to go to um, uh, Chicago, for example, is, is a great airport. There are so many uh dining options and things like that. So what I'm getting at is that. The amenities for the airport are a factor. And the other big factor and the reason that I fly, that I mainly have flown through Harlingen, even though I love Brownsville and I wanna use Brownsville. Um, when you work for a corporation, when you work for certain companies, they want you to get the lowest fare. When you book business travel and the lowest fare is often in Harlingen because they have Southwest Airlines. And, and, and unfortunately, and here's the other part of it, once you start flying Southwest, well, they have a frequent flyer program. And if you fly as much as someone, someone like me, I don't fly as much as I used to, but I used to fly all the time. And so I would accumulate a lot of points and then I could use those points to go on vacation. So I had the incentive to go through Southwest to one, and Southwest is only in Harlingen. If Southwest was in Brownsville, I'd be flying out of Brownsville. So that's a, a factor and that's been a thing since nineteen seventy-five, about, about nineteen seventy-five or so. When they decided to start flying to get away from just the triangle, which is San Antonio, Dallas and Houston. And then start flying out of uh Harlingen. Um, very good business for them and very lucrative for the city of Harlingen and for the airport. Not good for Brownsville. And a lot of us are just kinda tied to flying out of Harlingen because of corporate restrictions. Because of the um, these programs that are offered and things like that. And when these low-cost airlines came or have come before. I've looked into it and there are baggage fees, there are all kinds of other fees, even though the, the fare is low. So all those things need to be considered, the amenities in your airport, what fees are your carriers charging? And then just the ease of travel in general. Um, some of us that travel for business, want something easy.
Right, and the business model between Southwest and the rest of those carriers, Avelo. Um, Breeze and all of those is that. Southwest uses the hub system, which is what the traditional carriers use, right? The hub system. Well, these low, ultra, cuz they're called ultra-low cost carriers, right? Or I'm gonna use another word. Low-cost carriers, okay? But anyway. What they're, you, they use what they call the point-to-point model, which basically fly from point A to point B, there's no hub, right? So you're kind of, you're kind of, you know. You're kind of confined to wherever they're, you're either gonna fly to Orlando or you're not, right? So I think, but I, I get it. I understand why their thought process was, well, you know, Orlando, Disney and stuff like that, right? But I, like I said, I just, I mean, I honestly thought Las Vegas would be a big hit, right? I really did. I really did.
Well, and if I may interject, so here's, here's a, a point that, that I wanna make on that too, is that. That the cities that you're naming are more for leisure travel. And typically, there are conferences in Vegas and in Orlando and Disney hosts a lot of corporate conferences. I don't know if a lot of people know that, but. Disney hosts a lot of business people. I've gone to Disney for business as much as I've gone for, for pleasure, right? But um, but that is not always the case. Sometimes you have to fly within Texas if you work for, for a company. And within Texas, it's easier to fly Southwest. Um, they won't offer these, these routes, right? So if you're flying for business, which is. Usually the majority, right, of, of the, of what keeps the airline going. If you were to ask people in LaGuardia or whatever, you know, are you flying for business or leisure? You'd get a mix, right? But a lot of it is gonna be business and especially down here, I think a lot of the people that travel, travel for business. And for leisure, not as often. So you have to look at the volume of that. Um, and if you look at it, it's gonna be more your corporate, your company travel and that is not. Well-suited for these lower-cost carriers. And if you do get out of Texas, here's another factor that I've always told people. If I lived in Dallas, I never traveled growing up here. I mean, we just didn't have the money, right? It was so expensive. It's, it's expensive to travel outside of the valley, if you think about it. It, we don't, we have to connect in Houston or we connect in um, uh, Dallas or whatever. So you're essentially paying. For a second flight that you're not really, I mean. It's not really, shouldn't be necessary, but it is sometimes. And so you're paying for two flights, so the cost is more expensive. And so that's, that's a factor as well in, 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 in a flight. And so anyway, I just wanted to point that out. So my point is that it's a very challenging situation for Brownsville. Um, I wish that it was easier. Uh, I would. Love it if Southwest would entertain flying out of Brownsville, but I don't, I don't know that that's feasible.
Actually, I don't think they're gonna fly out of anywhere but Harlingen, to be honest with you. I mean, they have. Yeah, they do so well there. I mean, keep in mind that the majority of the employments, if you look at Harlingen's numbers. Uh, but the majority of the time it's been because of Southwest, right? The other carriers, United and of course, um. American, their numbers are actually lower employments versus Brownsville, by the way. Now, Delta has done a little better, right? Delta's done a little, a little better than, than United and uh. And um, American have, right? I mean, I'm glad that, you know, American and United have been committed to Brownsville and they've been committed for a long time. I hope that we continue to have that relationship with them and. I, I, I just, I just hope that we're able to, to market our airport a little bit better, you know, than we have in the past and. Another area I wanna jump into and I know it's, it's, it's um. It, it's a touchy subject. It's been a touchy subject since twenty fourteen and. You know, my composite back there doesn't make things easier sometimes. I get it, I get it, believe me, I get it. I mean, I get accused here locally of being Elon's cheerleader, you know? Actually, I was called another name recently and, you know, and I'm not, I'm not. I get, I get their concerns, you know, I really do. But one thing that I wanted to point out and I picked the PG version of. What I think has been horrible behavior in the city. Is uh, what was recently done to a mural, and I think this is a private mural, this is not even a city mural, but it was. A private mural. And by the way, this is the PG version, okay? There have been far worse. I've talked about those far worse ones. I posted what has happened, but I think that we have done. As city leaders, and I'm going to say it, I'm gonna say it because I've been a little disappointed with our city, city leaders. When they haven't called out this behavior, we let it happen, right? You know, this idea of vandalizing a mural, the very first one, by the way, the pink one, that a lot of people didn't like. I thought there was nothing wrong with it, but a lot of people didn't like. And to put vulgar, vulgar. Graffiti on that mural was horrible, right? For somebody to go out there and say the F-word and spray paint it. F SpaceX and Elon and at the time, they even said that to Trey Mendez right at the time. And I think it's horrible behavior. It's horrible behavior and our city leaders have not called. Our citizens, some of our citizens out there on it. I mean, this is not the kind of. Stuff that we, that, that we should be doing. It gives everyone the wrong impression. And it, and it does, and it sends the wrong message to our largest employer in town. I mean, what can we do? I mean, I, I get it. I understand their concerns. I understand they're concerned about the beach access, right? We all are, we all are, right? I believe that we should have access to the beach, right? But we've also gotta understand the infrastructure down there is limited right now. You know, there's not a, it's not like they can roll those rockets somewhere other than highway, through Highway Four, right? But this kinda behavior, our city leaders have seemed to shy away from even saying, you know what? This is not Brownsville. This is not what, what we're about. This is not what we should be doing. We should be. We should be, you know, working with our, with our job creators instead of doing this kinda behavior. I mean. What's your take? I mean, what do you think we need to do to kinda get people to understand, you know? We get it. We get some of their concerns, but this is not acceptable, you know?
I think that any type of tagging or any type of um, behavior like this is reprehensible. Unfortunately, I did grow up seeing a lot of tagging happening. Um, I never, yeah, obviously, I mean, I was always, it, it, it's just uh. It's reminiscent of negativity of just um, people just uh. Not following rules or not following, not conforming to certain things, uh. And, 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 and you know, and, and you can stand up for what you believe in, you can stand up against what you don't believe in. Without resorting to this type of behavior. And I don't think it really, it doesn't get anywhere. This does not send the right message. This is not going to get Elon to change his take on anything, right? All it does is, all it does is mess up, make our city look bad and, and uh, make our citizens look bad. This is one of the safest areas in the country. And we, we wanna continue to show that we are a, a very diverse city, that we're a very welcoming city, that we are um. A, a city that has um, very educated individuals. Um, that has a lot of talent and a lot of skills to offer. This does not send that message. And it doesn't change anything. Uh, it, it says you're not gonna get anywhere by doing this type of, of stuff. And, and by uh, just saying, you know, um, F Elon or whatever. Um, that, that is just not acceptable. Even if you disagree with it. I'm very concerned about the environment personally. I, I do, um, and I've asked people, you know, well. Well, what happens when the, when the rocket, um, you know, with all the, the, I forgot what it's called, like, like the shrapnel type. Material, right? Falls into the water, that concerns me. I'm, I'm a big animal lover. Anyone that knows me knows that I'm a huge animal lover. I'm concerned about the dolphins. I'm concerned about the turtles. I'm concerned about all these things, right? The ocelots, exactly. But this is not the type of behavior that we want to exhibit. It, it's just never okay and that would be the first to say, please don't do this. It's not getting, it's not getting us anywhere.
Right, it's not gonna get us, it's not gonna get us a seat at the table, right? And that's what we need. We need, we need a seat at the table because I think. That if we are granted a seat at the table, they'll come around to working with us, but. You know, doing this kinda stuff, I mean, for example, the mural, right? I understand that people didn't like the pink mural. I understand that. But that didn't give them the right to go and spray paint it. I mean, after they spent, you know, tens of thousands of dollars on the mural, for God's sakes. I mean, somebody spent. Time painting it, right? But you know what? It didn't matter whether it was the pink mural or the, or the butterfly one down on Eleventh Street or whatever. I mean, you can't make anybody happy, right? I mean, everybody's got their different artistic tastes, you know? But that's, this is not, this is not what we should be doing, you know, this is just not. Regardless of what our political preferences may be or our personal preferences may be, you know, it's just. Something that I hope that our new generation of ci- city leaders. Are able to, you know, stand up and tell these, tell people, you know, sometimes this is just not the right thing to do. Staying silent for me is being complacent and I think. Far too often, our leaders have been too silent and too complacent when it comes to whether it's something like this. Or just information being thrown out there, regardless of what the issue is, right? Whether it's SpaceX, whether it's taxes. Whether it's expansion of the zoo, our leaders just don't seem to want to. Face the public. And by the way, that's the other thing. You know, I can tell you that, you know, there's one or two city commissioners, when I've called them, they respond. They respond right away, right? There's others, oh my gosh, they don't respond. It takes them forever. I mean, they pretend they never got your message, you know, um, it just, there has to be a different. A different approach to this because, you know, it almost seems like nobody cares, you know? Uh, so, I don't know. It's just something that I think, you know, accessibility is very important. With our leadership today and we need to, we need to show a little bit more of it, you know, not less of it.
No, I agree and I think that you need to be able to stand, if you're a leader and you are um, the steward for the, for the citizens. Then you need to be able to stand on issues and you need to be able to say what you believe, even if it's not the popular. You need to exhibit that leadership. Um, if you want others to follow, then you need to lead by example.
And I wanted to talk just briefly. I know this is a controversial issue right now, especially with, you know. Some of the things that have been going on with regards to immigration. I mean, as you know, the city of McAllen, probably about two weeks ago, put out a public statement saying that they were not going to, um, have their police force or their police officers. Um, I wouldn't say the word cooperate, but they were not going to be part of the enforcement effort when it comes to rounding people up. I mean, you've heard the stories. I mean, you've heard the stories of how Los Fresnos has been hit quite a bit, right? And obviously, everybody's for law and order, right? We all want safe borders and we all want people to come in the right way and everything, but I don't think the city of Brownsville has actually put out any kind of, uh, public uh, statement with regards to our own police force. Um, are you in favor of our police force working with ICE in some of those areas? Or do you think it should be more their responsibility versus our local police department? I mean, our local police department has enough to do as it is, right? I mean, you know, I'm, I don't have an opinion right now with regards to whether local law enforcement, police officers, Cameron County officers should be assisting, you know, the federal forces on, on, obviously taking care of an issue that the federal government should have taken care of it a long time ago, right? I mean, what's your take?
Um, I think that from having several conversations and just being uh, very in tune with, with, with politics myself for a while, so I've seen a lot of different forums, whether it be from the sheriff's candidates or from, I've, I've gotten different opinions, right? And, and actually, most of the opinions kind of align, even though they're a little bit different. So my point to this is that I feel that there's a consensus that our police force is already in, in, in our sheriff's department and just law enforcement locally is already very busy, is already, um, uh, just have their hands, hands full with just, um, making sure that our citizens are safe. Um, one big concern that I know that I've heard from law enforcement is that, um, they don't want people to stop reporting crimes because they're afraid that their cousin or their aunt or whatever is gonna get deported because the police officer is gonna come and ask for, for documentation, right?
Right.
So I, that's a concern for me. I, I, I don't want people, I don't want it to thwart the capacity of our police officers to do their primary duty. Um, and I believe in respecting, uh, jurisdiction. So, um, if it's not in their jurisdiction, it's not, it wasn't in their job description and they have not been trained on it. I wouldn't want to over, overburden our police officers with that type of thing. We want to stay away from any potential lawsuits, um, if they were to, if they were to somehow, a- and you know, and I've, and I've had a great experience with, with our, with our law enforcement here locally. I think that they have made great strides, especially in the past few years, to really reach out to the community and to really market themselves as, as community helpers and not as the, the police, you know, that people, I remember growing up, a lot of moms would scare the kids with, you know, the police are gonna come get you if you don't behave and things like that. And I know that I've never raised my daughter to do that. My daughter sees police officers as community helpers and that's how we should, should see them. And I don't want that to change. And I don't, and I don't foresee that there's gonna be an issue where somebody feels targeted, right? Or felt like they were mistreated because they were perceived to be here illegally and they were not, and then it, and then there's a lawsuit. And then that it really affects our city negatively. So I'm looking at everything really from a legal standpoint and just from an efficiency standpoint, I really want our police officers to focus on what they already have on hand that they, uh, uh, the training that they have, on the jurisdiction that they have. I want them to focus on what, what they're trained to handle and I don't want them to go outside of it if they don't have to. However, if a federal agency approaches them and says, hey, we really need help with this because this is a, uh, a safety issue, right, for the community. This is a, a, um, you know, I, I can't think of a, of, of a potential example, but let's say that, that it, that there really is something where, where our citizens are in danger and the police, the local police, you know, they really need the help from the local police. Then in that situation, okay, let's get our local police engaged, but let's get them up to speed on what's going on and let's get them, um, some proper training, whatever needs to happen. But for now, I don't think that it is, um, that it is something that they should take on. Uh, I think that our federal agencies are already handling it. And from all the conversations that I've had with local leaders, um, Brownsville as opposed to other cities that have, um, people coming in, right, from, uh, whether it be from Mexico, Venezuela, what have you, um, Brownsville has been handling it much better. And I've been out there because my, my daughter and I go out and, and, um, we've, we've gone to Good Neighbor Settlement House, we've fed the homeless. We've gone to help some of the, some of the people that arrive on the buses. We've gone and given them tacos and things like that because I think that, you know, as a good Christian, um, i- i- it's, it's, it's not up to me to decide if they stay here or not, right? But I can give them a taco. And I can, and I can be a good Christian. And then it's up to the laws and the courts to decide what's, what's gonna happen, right? If they approve their, their, uh, asylum or they don't or, or whatever. Um, that's, that's not, um, on me, right? So anyway, um, hopefully that answers your question. I just, my, my concern is with the legality of it. And I just want to make sure that our, that our police officers concentrate on making sure that we're safe.
Yeah. Well, obviously you mentioned, uh, at the start of the podcast, you've done a lot of work with Habitat for Humanity and as you all know, the most famous volunteer for Habitat for Humanity was President Carter, bless his soul. He left us, you know, a month and a half ago or so and, and obviously he was the, definitely the, uh, a great statesman, uh, great former president and obviously a great Christian. There's no doubt about that. And so the last area I just wanted to touch on is, how do you think your faith uh, will play a factor in, in, in your decision to not only run for public office, but how, how you will lead? Not only just your faith, but your, 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 your private work with Habitat for Humanity and so forth.
Well, I think that's when I realized that, um, that it was, it was my vocation. It was something that I was passionate about to, to help others. And I think that being in, in a leadership position and when you do politics right, because politics gets a very negative connotation to it. It gets, um, but that's because sometimes we don't elect the right leaders, unfortunately. And that's why it has a bad name. But if you use, if you are a politician that keeps your, your morals and your ethics and what you believe in true while you are a leader, then you can do some great, great good for the community. And that's one of the things that I wanted to come back here and do. And, uh, as a Catholic, that's, that's what I believe is, is, um, that I am encumbered to do. As I mentioned earlier, um, I think that that God gave me all those challenges growing up for a reason. And, and this is it. Um, I think I was meant to, to give back. Um, I've been serving as part of Rotary in various capacities. We've given scholarships to local students. Um, I've have, like I said, my daughter and I have gone to feed people at Good Neighbor Settlement House through, through my Zonta Club. Um, there's just a variety of things that I've done throughout the years, throughout fifteen years that I've been serving the community. And it has really fulfilled me. And I've met some great people along the way. And through those relationships, not just with politicians, I got interviewed once and they asked me, you know, they said, oh, isn't it great that you know all these politicians? I said, you know, it's, it's, it's nice because, you know, when you know the local leaders and you can, you can say and you can vocalize things, you can say, hey, I don't like this. You know, um, and I think that we should do this differently, right? It's, it's a good thing. But I've also been very lucky to know some of the nonprofit leaders, some of the local nonprofit leaders and some of the people that are really are driving change right here in our community. And so I, I consider myself very, very blessed to have these people in my life. I think that God put them there for a reason. And he put me here for a reason. And, and, and it is incumbent upon me that I, I have to, that I should serve my community. Because I have these skills through my work experience, through my education, through my unique life experience, I have a lot to offer. I have a broader perspective on things. I'm, I'm thankful, I'm thankful even for the challenges that I had in, in life because it taught me so much. And, and I have so much to give and that's why I'm running for, for District Three City Commissioner.
Well, definitely, you've definitely chosen a great district. I know that the current, uh, occupant of, of, of your position, uh, he's actually lives across the street from me. And one of the things that I will say is that he's very accessible and I hope that you follow his lead when it comes to uh, being as accessible as the current commissioner has been. I've been very lucky to call him a friend and, uh, I, like I said, I really, uh, wish you the best of luck. I know it's, it's a packed race. It's a packed race, but, um, definitely, uh, you know, we've got a lot of insight into your candidacy tonight. And, uh, definitely we'll have you back on. We'll have you back on whenever you want to come on, you know? Hopefully, uh, hopefully I wasn't too tough, you know? I always joke around that, you know, with friends of mine, I said, how could they not want to be on my show? I'm the nicest podcaster locally, you know? So, uh, you know, but, uh, definitely it was great having you on. Uh, and I know it's gonna be a busy next two or three months for you, so we wish you the best of luck. And for those of you that, uh, were able to tune in, we thank you all for doing so. At the same time, for those of you that may have missed it, we are on twelve social media platforms. So if you didn't catch us on Facebook, on YouTube, on Rumble or on X, you can catch us on Apple Podcasts, Google Podcasts, Spotify, uh, and iHeartRadio on your own time. So I encourage everyone to, you know, if you didn't catch us tonight, go and catch the episode tomorrow. So you can get to know, uh, you know, Ms. Denise Chavez a little bit more. And, uh, we thank everybody for watching. Denise, thank you once again. It was an enjoyable evening. And, uh, we hope to have you back soon.
Thank you, Daniel. Appreciate the invite. Um, have a good night and everyone else watching, have a good night as well.
By the way, everybody, like we mentioned, the start of early voting is April twenty-second and the election day is the third, so.
That's correct. Yeah. So please go out and vote.
Alrighty. Regardless, go out and vote. Those that don't vote can't complain, as I say. Alrighty, everybody. You have a good night.
Bye.
Bye-bye. Give me one second while I shut off all the services.